The United States of America and to the Republic of British States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in the moment of silence.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll second the motion by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the August sixth meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from board administration is approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process. Item five from human resources includes A. Approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B. Presentation of award certificate for four hours of paid time off to Mark Nera.
You're coming up for it or?
You're coming up anyway. I'll give it to you then. Thank you, Mark, for the generous donation of fifteen gallons of your blood. Not all at once, but over time. We give four hours of paid time off when they reach gallon milestones and we've done that for a long time matching the Sioux City. Item five C is approval of a new copier lease agreement with access systems. Item six from secondary roads is to approve the permit to work in the right of way for Mitch Parker. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Item seven from the county treasurer for action is approval to redeem remaining balance of tax certificate in the amount of one thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents for parcel ending in nine zero zero six.
Good evening. Tina Bertrand, Woodbury County Treasurer. Back in February, we had a customer or parcel owner come in and I think we suspended taxes and with that there was a tax sale certificate already issued and that process under the code is for the board to direct the auditor to redeem that certificate. What happened was there was a special assessment that was paid by the investor as what we refer to as subsequent. So, once it goes to tax sale, the future taxes that are then billed in special assessments are paid the following November. That allows time for the property owners to make some payments so that they don't get further behind on it. In this particular instance, the investor paid the property taxes under what we refer to as subsequent tax payments, but did not select that subsequent tax box for the special assessment. So, it did not attach to the tax sale certificate. And when it posted in the system, it just came across with the individual name on it. So, we really didn't have any idea that if it was paid by, you know, it could have been paid by a friend or family member of the parcel owner or who actually paid it, but it did not come over as the investor, because it was a company that was the investor. So, we had no, we did not realize that it was actually paid by them. So, when we actually redeemed the tax sale certificate, they called, said, hey, this amount's wrong. We did our research on it and realized that there was a mistake. With that, I actually ran it through, or ran it by the county attorney and he directed me to outside counsel to make sure that if we're redeeming this, that we're doing it in the correct manner because we don't want to just refund taxes with interest on it if we don't have a code, either a code to go to or make sure that the resolution that you actually pass the first time was applicable. So, that attorney did actually confirm that the guidance is as long as we could demonstrate that the person who paid that special assessment was an employee of the investor and was acting on behalf of the investor, that the original board resolution would cover reimbursing or paying off and redeeming that amount. So, the amount that we have is the original special assessment plus the applicable interest and the interest only until the original redemption date, so only until February. So, we're just, this is just kind of dotting an i and crossing a t to make sure that we have it recorded correctly. Any other questions?
Ms. Taylor.
And Mr. Auditor, you're good with this?
What's that?
Are you good with this?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'd make the motion to recommend directing the auditor to redeem the remaining amount owed of one thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Bittenger. Hearing no further questions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight from human resources for action includes A. Approval of approval to add business income and extra expense coverage to the new law enforcement center.
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources. I, I'm bringing this forth to be signed. This is a business interruption insurance in case of a major event, fire, wind, hail, and we'd have to move the inmates. Then, this would cover the income from, or the revenue from those inmates. And the, I just want to say the amount is prorated till February, February first. And so, I'm sure to go up next February.
So, what's the annual expense? You may have that in here, but I saw the prorated amount.
Annual expense? I don't, I don't have, but I mean, this is like seven months till February, so.
Double that.
Yeah.
And then what's the coverage essentially? What's the amount that would be? Is it the full two hundred? We just talked about this a little bit at the law enforcement center, meaning the approximate two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a month that our budget is predicated on in terms of revenue. Does it make whole that entire amount?
It would, it would make whole the amount of the revenue lost by the inmates there at the time.
Right. So, if we had, let's say, a catastrophic thing that where we had to parse out four hundred different inmates to twenty different counties, it would make us whole to that two hundred and seventy thousand essentially?
If we were full, yes. Is that what you're saying?
If we only had fifty in there though, if we only had fifty inmates in there, then it would only reimburse for that until.
Right.
Yeah.
It's real. So. No accidents unless we're full.
Good plan.
Good plan.
And who knows if we had to move all the inmates?
Yeah.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Nelson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is approval of the memorandum of understanding addressing retention and recruitment in the county attorney's office. Melissa, do you mind if I summarize our three clarifications here? Sure. So, the contract for signature before me at this moment, I want to mention three corrections to it to match what we had talked about the last board meeting and also in discussions with everyone. So, the one that is before me for signature, different than the packet, fills in the effective date at the top. It's no longer blank. The effective date is today. Second change is on item two E regarding the section on remote work. Instead of saying simply, as far as oversight from the county attorney, instead of saying simply in his sole discretion, it now matches more closely the language in what we currently have for vacation leave, which is what I communicated last week, and that reads as follows. Subject to the approval of the county attorney in the same practice currently being used by employees to schedule vacation time off. The county attorney may require rescheduling of the remote work if, in his or her judgment, the scheduling of the remote work will adversely affect the efficient operation of the county attorney's office. Any board members have questions on that clarification? And the third and last is a simple correction, a typo at the end of the document, right before it says and witness whereof, it has the wrong date. So, the date is corrected to 2024 to 2027. With those corrections, it matches what we've discussed previously. And Melissa, do you have any other things, any other things I missed?
No. This is pretty close to, to what we approved last, last week. I would say to make sure that the steps were changed for the option for the attorney or the county attorney to move somebody up the scale a little quicker. So, they were changed to match the amount of the movement of the steps. So, that is another change. And, but that's in, that's in this, this MOU. I just wanted to explain that as we didn't really talk about that last week.
Unfortunately, James cannot be here since he is in trial, which is part of what we're all talking about.
So.
Appreciate everyone's work on this.
I'll move the MOU.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Little phone drop moment.
A little bit.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. It is our sincere hope this gets things moving along as quickly as possible. Appreciate everyone's work in the office. Item nine from secondary roads, county engineer Mark Nera includes A. For action, approval of contract for project Perrin J-178, bridge replacement project with Graves Construction Co., Inc. for six hundred and six thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven, eighty-seven.
I recommend approval of the contract and bond.
I'll move that.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is to receive bids for propane FY 2025 and return to the county engineer for review and recommendation.
I have bid tabulation forms for the board to keep track if they wish to, so.
So, on propane, you didn't have award if low is clearly determined? Was that intended on, on D to be for both of those?
It was requested on my bid sheet, but it didn't get typed on the agenda.
Well, I didn't know if that meant item D was award.
Both.
Yeah, B and C.
I'd say that would be the board's opportunity to decide that. Usually propane is pretty clear cut, so much per gallon, so. Last year's prices for the board's information was a dollar four. Did you have a letter opener? First bid is from Saff Brothers of Sioux City. Bid price is one dollar thirty-nine and nine tenths of a cent per gallon, one point three nine nine. Next bid is from New Cooperative Incorporated at Fort Dodge, Iowa. Bid price is a dollar twenty-five per gallon, one twenty-five. And the next bid is from Johnson Propane of Battle Creek, Iowa. Bid price is a dollar six per gallon. Recommend board receive.
I'll move to receipts.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero.
I have no problem making a recommendation that you award for a dollar six to Johnson Propane for 2024, 2025 winter.
I'll second the motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Item C is receive bids for calcium chloride, 2025, and return to the county engineer for review and recommendation.
I have another bid tabulation sheet. I did receive an irregular bid. It came in this afternoon about one o'clock via email. The individual company has recently bought out one of our farmer suppliers, Jericho Industries. He was indicating that the reason he was late was because of the turnover between the companies. I had spoken with him yesterday and told him if he could email to me by four o'clock, which is the deadline for bids, that I would recommend we accept it. In this case, since it didn't come in until today, it's not my recommendation, but should the board choose to, you could accept that bid as well. We do allow minor changes in the bidding process should such things come up. If we, if you don't decide to accept that bid, we would leave it unread.
Ms. Taylor.
So, are we going to need to make a decision on that shortly?
Well, what, what was the due date originally?
Monday, four o'clock.
So, yesterday, four P.M. And it was because they had a switch of command essentially?
That, that was what he was expressing. They've recently been bought.
I just want to make sure we don't walk away and not have guidance on that and then, if that makes sense.
Well, I'm fine with accepting a late bid if there's an extenuating circumstance. We've done it in the past on other things.
And, and this time it, it's your option to do so.
And there's no guarantee they're the lowest bid either, so.
No, they have not had access to any of the other bids.
How does that process then work in terms of typically you open in a public forum? Would you just report back and?
Well, electronic bids are becoming the, the standard for Iowa DOT now. I don't know in what format they come. I, I'm assuming it's as a PDF and then they open the PDFs and read them. I haven't been in a DOT bid process. We still require paper. You know, again, I would have recommended the bid be read had, had it arrived on time. Again, the board has the option to waive the requirement and, and read it today. It came to me, it would have the same date stamp, time and date stamp for when the email was received.
Okay. So, you have that?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I missed the question, I guess. But, yes, we did have a time and a date stamp on it and it was prior to the board supervisors' meeting today at four thirty.
Thank you for.
I think it was one twenty-six this afternoon.
Thank you for explaining that to me. So, I'm good with accepting?
Yeah, I'd be fine accepting it. Me too.
Well, receiving it technically.
Oh, yeah, receiving it, yeah.
All right. I will read theirs first. This one is from EnviroTech, formerly Jericho Industries. Seven hundred forty dollars per ton, total bid sixty-five thousand, one hundred twenty dollars. Last year's price for the board's information was four hundred and seventy-four dollars per ton.
Mark, may I ask, what is causing that increase?
I, that, I have no idea. We had a range of bids last year. I think the highest was six fifty or six seventy, if memory serves. So, they do tend to vary. It, it depends on where they're bringing it from. This company is based out of Denver, Colorado. They recently acquired Jericho's facility in Indianola. So, it, it could be shipping. It's, it's hard to say exactly what it is. First one is from Perk Products in Nashville, Tennessee. As you can see on the bid tab form, we sent out to a lot of folks. We got three responses. We have a lot of people request to bid and then for whatever reason, don't. But, Perk Products and Chemical Company bid four hundred ninety-five dollars per ton. Four ninety-five.
Was there a total on that?
Pardon me?
Was there a total on that as well?
Forty-three thousand, five hundred sixty dollars.
Okay, thanks.
And for the board and public's information, what we use the, the chloride for is we mix it with the deicing sand that we use. It keeps the pile from freezing. It, it also adds some low temperature punch for melting snow and ice on the road. The next bid is from Scottwood Industries of Overland Park, Kansas. Scottwood was last year's supplier. Their bid price is four hundred eighty-eight dollars per ton, total forty-two thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars. I recommend the board receive the bids.
So, move.
Second. Second the motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero.
I recommend award to Scottwood Industries.
So, moved.
Second motion by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item E is to award bid for precast RCV culvert to replace twelve-foot reinforced concrete slab located on Two Twentieth Street.
I, just to give the board a little bit of background, Two Twentieth Street is scheduled for resurfacing next year. That'll be hot mixed asphalt resurfacing with cold in place recycling of the existing pavement prior to the resurfacing. Part of our planned preparation is we go out, we check all the culverts and bridges underneath the pavement so that hopefully we catch those things that might result in a pavement defect and shorten the life of an area pavement. Last week, we let several culvert liners that are under the road to be repaired and sealed up prior to the paving going down. That inspection also caught a short spanned bridge that had bad support piling. We designed a structure to replace it, in this case, a twelve-by-seven precast box culvert. Our plan is to do that work with county staff to remove the old bridge. We'll hire a crane to come in and set these sections. Then, we'll backfill and it'll be ready to be overlaid and, you know, in the twenty-five years of that new pavement, it won't need to be disturbed. We have two precast concrete suppliers in the area. We requested quotations from each of them. The low quotation came from Old Castle Infrastructure for seventy-six thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars and ninety cents. I recommend award to Old Castle Infrastructure.
Second the motion by Raddick. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Item F is to discuss changes to the secondary road dust control policy.
I wanted to have some discussion about the dust control policy. This has become an increasingly expensive program for us. The last time the board reviewed this was in 2018. At, at that time, I had also expressed similar sentiments when, when our revenues and expenses were a good deal lower than what we're looking at this year and prior years. I included some cost data on what we spent here in recent years and while I, as I look through this, we're looking at about a program that used to cost seventy dollars a foot, now up to a dollar seventy. The program is going north of a quarter million dollars a year to take care of roughly twelve miles of road. We are required to do hall roads and detour routes when we take a paved road and close it and then shift traffic to a gravel road. You know, that's inadvertent traffic. That's only right that we take care of those people that are out there when we push traffic onto them. It, it's also important when we do round intersections on those detours in hall road routes so that we maintain safety where people are crossing and entering traffic. That part of the program, I propose to continue. The board back in 2018 had heard comments from quite a few people in the area around Peterson Farms, Whiskey Creek Acres, where that's one of our largest farm and livestock operations in the county. There was a good deal of traffic on Southern Buchanan Avenue and Hundred Eightieth Street. Actually, that traffic went all the way up Buchanan Avenue to that first mile south, Hundred Seventieth Street, south of Grandy Drive. At that point in time, the board had tried to help those folks. I mean, you're, you were increasing the program in an attempt to bring some of them in, but their, their traffic still didn't hit that threshold of a hundred and fifty vehicles a day, which is what the board lowered it to. When I got here to Woodbury County and what we did for the first nine years of my tenure was we took care of roads with more than two hundred vehicles per day. We roughly doubled our program. We went from two hundred down to a hundred and fifty. At the time, at seventy dollars a foot, we were running the program for right around a hundred thousand, a little over it some years. But, now that program has gotten quite a bit more expensive. We have been trying over the years, different products to replace calcium chloride. For every probably five residents we have out there who really appreciate the program, we've got one who doesn't like calcium chloride because when you drive through and it's still wet, it's like deicing salt. It gets on your car. You better get it washed off because it can lead to some corrosion. But, it is the most effective product on those high traffic roads. We've tried soy soap stocks, tree sap, permazyme, clay creep, earth bind. There's, there's a number of them that we've tried over the years in an attempt to find something that we can get by with just two applications per year, which is what chloride has historically allowed us to do and, and is a pretty good performer. It's what they call hydroscopic. It, it pulls moisture from the ground and from the air to keep those fines bonded in place. Products like earth bind, tree sap, and the soy products basically put a coating on the road like an old seal coat or road oil, which was used prior to issues they had with, I think it was dioxins in used oil that sunset the use of that project worldwide, or at least US-wide. As I look at the 2026 budget, the board, as we've discussed before, is, is facing the likelihood that we're not going to be able to make the minimum levy. Based on the projections I did last year, we're looking at being somewhere between fifty and ninety thousand dollars short, assuming we have growth this year. That fifty to ninety thousand short of that minimum local effort means we lose another fifty in road use tax fund dollars. To me, this eliminating or rolling back the dust control program is some of the low hanging fruit. I know I've said it before, this is a quality of life improvement of the roads, not necessarily a quality of roads issue. In an attempt to maintain staffing, maintain the level of gravel we're putting on the roads, if I have to make a cut somewhere, this seems to be an area where a cut would do the least amount of pain and degradation of road quality. I'm, I'm sure you folks have heard from a couple of our callers too that are on the dust treated roads. They would rather see our blade out there twice a week taking care of washboards. They would rather see our blade out there twice a week taking care of washboards than they would see the dust-free road. But it has been a popular program. I had a request yesterday out by our gravel pit from the adjacent property owner who feels that his yields are being damaged by all the gravel trucks going in and out of the gravel pit on days with a prevailing southerly wind. You know, there's dust headed his way. But it's really hard for me to go along with putting dust down when I'm not improving the health and safety of people. If we had an issue with safety of the trucks going in and out, we have water right there. We just pump it into a truck and treat it with water to benefit those trucks. But at this point in time, it hasn't got to the point where it's bad enough that we need to do that. But he did have definite concerns about that and made the request, which he may come and make that request to you, which I inform you, you guys are my bosses. If you feel that's an appropriate use of dust control, then, you know, we follow your orders. But to me, that is a very difficult thing to buy, especially when on Charles Avenue and One Eightieth, where we put down dust control in front of houses. We're not doing it in front of those crops and we're double the traffic. So.
Mark?
I did want you to be aware that this is popular for some people. I know I'm filibustering, go ahead.
That's fine. Would this be brought forward if it was not for House File seven eighteen? Is this something that you would want to bring up anyway due to cost?
I'd want to bring it up either way, Matthew.
You would?
Yes. And the reason being is inflation is really eating into this program. Now, we do have a small business in the community who is our supplier on this. Every two, three years, I take new bids, Jericho being our former alternative bidder on the program. But, you know, this money is benefiting that local business.
Mr. Taylor?
This would be a significant loss of income for them.
Thank you, Mr. Jer. So this sort of thing does make me a little mad because quality of life, not at you, but the legislature, because I think it's directly because of House File seven eighteen that took every one of the ninety-nine counties and said you need to be on the same diet, even though ours has been fiscally austere and conservative. And now we're trying to cut into things that, I mean, if you just look at one thing, quality of life, that old stub off of Lakeport, where, you know, the new roundabout's going to be, we spent a little extra time and money to give an access road so that folks wouldn't have to park in a church and then walk who are elderly or some infirm. And I ran that the other day and that is really appreciated by those folks, so they can get into their own homes. So quality of life matters. And to me, I'm not going to be here, you know, past the first. I think this is a future board discussion, but I would like to see it maintained just because it is a quality-of-life issue. It is popular and I think that folks out there will be impacted. And so my reservation and heartburn over this is reserved for the legislature, who decided that we needed to be put on the same program as Johnson County and every other. So that's my two cents for whatever.
We are about two and a half months from starting our budget process.
No, and I completely appreciate you bringing it forward. So there's no, you know, that's what you're doing, your job.
And I agree with, regardless of House File seven eighteen, I think you would have brought this up just because of the cost to make sure that this is something we still want to do. But I agree with Jeremy. If not for House File seven eighteen, we wouldn't even be sitting here thinking about cutting this just to fund our budget for other things that we're already trying to do. And that's what's really sad. You and I have talked about this issue several times and I told you today that if we ax this, that we should send a letter to all those affected and tell them with all of our elected officials' numbers in the State House and Senate and tell them that this is a direct result of what they did. This is not within our control. And, but I look at this bridge that we just took the little bit on. I remember when that came out and it got dropped down to a three-ton bridge. We are making progress, but those bridges are far more important as a quality-of-life thing than the dust control. So we are now having to choose on some of this stuff and it's hard because for me, I'll take a bridge all day long over dust control. I think that's common sense. But we should have the ability to make those decisions and we can't anymore. So.
Would we be able to give homeowners the ability to like throw in a sprinkler? We're not going to pay for it, I'm just saying like we would allow them to have a sprinkler that sprays water on the road as an alternative?
I have reservations with that. We've damaged sprinkler systems just doing snow removal on occasion. We have some people, a couple on Correctionville Road where we took out a row of sprinklers just by putting our wing down to push snow back. And it was unintentional. It was a new system that had been put in. But we also have areas where we've had to do pavement patching. The subdivision that's off of Morningside Avenue, near Whispering Creek, but there's, I can't think of the name of the streets that are right there on the easterly side of the road. It would be south and east of the Memorial Garden Cemetery there, east of town. So straight east of Christie Road is as best I can get you there. No, not Suri, that's private road. This would be on the other side. It's between Whispering Creek Golf Course.
Okay, so like Arlington.
Some of the houses do border on the old railroad right away. That's the boundary between Whispering Creek and this residence. It's one of those areas that the city hasn't annexed yet that we still take care of the streets. But we did some pavement patching there when we had a couple of panels of pavement fail two, three years ago and messed up a guy's sprinkler system. He had it right behind the curb line. So if they were putting it in, you know, I don't know how practical it is for a sprinkler system to be able to throw water sixteen to twenty feet so that they're throwing it from the back of the right of way where we wouldn't get into it. I would really hesitate to go along with that kind of a system, I guess. Keith, it just, I think it would cause more problems than solutions. Plus with so many utilities in the ditch anymore, they're taking a risk just trying to put something in out there.
And there's no creative thinking that we can get this money too to keep this program in there?
I'm all for creative thinking and funding, but, you know, again, you look at this program with what it cost here in the last couple of years, two years of this program cost a bridge, getting to your prior analogy. And I think, you know, Lane Tapke was one of our champions of getting bridges replaced when we were talking about the special bridge program. He was there at every meeting supporting that effort. And, you know, one of the things he had said to me was that it made a difference for his operation because he had a couple of farms he had to do twelve miles of out-of-distance travel to. I remember him talking about that in each meeting because he was having to go around posted bridges and what a difference it made. Like you said, we're making progress, but we still have ways to go. We still need to do five to six per year.
But the problem is, and I appreciate Mark bringing that up, the problem is it's not like we're saying, okay, if you don't do this dust program, then you're going to get an extra bridge. It's the constraint that it sounds like you're not going to have that money. So that's the problem when we're really levying, no pun intended, with taxpayers and we're saying, hey, this is what's out there. You're not presented with, don't do the dust control program because we'll be able to add.
Yeah, we're taking something and we give nothing else back.
I wish I could make that promise.
Right.
Exactly, Jeremy.
So none of us are happy about this. If this does come back, what are you most likely to look at as far as a metric to make a reduction if it is required? Would you be looking at reducing a number of miles or would you be looking at certain types of roads? Or would you be looking at, you know, based on complaints? If someone complains they don't like it, then that road doesn't get it?
No, the way we would do it is exactly what I lined out in the backup would be eliminated from the program. That would be all roads that we're doing just for dust control, quality of life. We would continue to do haul roads, we would continue to do detours. That's it. Those are the ones that are basically required by Iowa DNR. We do have, that would still be included in the program, our program addresses that people can put it down at their own expense and they would still be eligible to do that.
So in other words, the cost is, and the gap is becoming too high if there's no correction made to this law? That it's an either-or as far as quality of life?
We're going to have to look at reducing services somewhere.
Right, but it's not a graduated reduction. You're talking about this has to go.
That portion of the program is the first cut.
Okay.
And each year, we'll have to look a little deeper as we go through.
Okay.
Because if you remember my charts, that deficiency accelerates each year because you don't make it in year one, you've got a bigger deficit in year two and three and four. Twenty-twenty-nine is the last year of the current House File seven eighteen provisions. So once this starts on us, we're looking at it for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight at least. Twenty-nine remains to be seen. If they like the program, what I'm afraid of is that the legislature will extend it. But I guess what I'm looking for is guidance and whether that's my liaison saying, well, bring this to us, we'll give it consideration. One of the things I've been working on as we're awaiting a new county engineer candidate is to go through these policies, make sure they're updated and that they're still in line with current practice. We try and stay with those, but it's good to have board members every four or five years take another look at them.
I guess I'm not happy with having to lose the program. You and I have talked about this many times. I think there's several miles in here that should be paved, outright paved, and we wouldn't have to, you know, would have to worry about some of this stuff. But at the end of the day, our job is to have passable roads and open roads. And so dust control does not fit into that. But I am serious about, we're going to get blowback. I remember last summer when it was just terrible dry, I had people on roads that had hardly any travel were calling me complaining about dust or asking about dust control because it was just so, so dry that dust was so fine, it just carried. But I think, I'm serious. I think we need to send a letter to these affected routes that have dust control every year and explain exactly why, that this is not something that we want to do, but it is out of our hands. And I really think we need to do that.
Yeah.
So.
We can make that happen. You know, it's my hope that some people will pick up that we're discussing this today. I figured to give it a couple of weeks before I'd bring the final policy back, unless I have direction from the board that you absolutely don't want to make this cut at this time. It is a project that's becoming increasingly expensive. If you want to, instead of axing it, if you want to go to two hundred vehicles per day, that roughly cuts the program in half if you're looking to split the baby as King Solomon did. That's a possibility as well because our program roughly doubled when we did this, moved down to a hundred and fifty.
Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Well, I think it should come back, you know, with the engineer making recommendations. We can probably let him know our thoughts, but I think it probably should be discussed as an action item on the agenda with the public here to also weigh in on it.
I agree with you, Keith, on that, yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
My thought is if there's not, I'm not supportive of this. And unless there's a majority that is, I feel like it'll kick up a bunch of dust in terms of people coming out and saying this is why we want it. Again, I think it's a consideration if there's somebody who wants to put this on the agenda to do that. But I think it's a better discussion for future budget and a future board. If there's only, if people are just interested in the academic exercise of doing it for action, to me, I think a board member should put it on to say, I want this. Otherwise, my worry is there's not a majority or people up here saying, I have the will to do this right now. I don't see how it serves the public very well. I appreciate the discussion, but.
It is guidance for preparation of the 2026 budget, though. This is one of my line items.
I understand that, but you, there's a potential anyway of a majority not being here. And I just think unless a supervisor says, I think that this should be on, if we can't get that threshold of one, it's just a thought. I just want to say where I'm at, so if others are.
That's why I brought it as the information item tonight.
Yeah, no, I very appreciate it, yeah.
So what's the impact if it's not, if there's no corrections by the legislature and we continue as is? What's the impact to the rest of your budget?
The impact is I have to do some trimming somewhere. Probably the biggest impacted portions of the program are our construction budget. I would try to avoid hitting gravel. If you look at my big items, personnel wages is number one. That's five million dollars out of our budget and round numbers. New equipment, we're spending about 1.1 million. Fuel costs are down, thankfully. I think, I haven't got the final figures for fiscal year 2024 yet, but we've gone down from a high of about 1.2 million. Last year, I think we were right around eight hundred, nine hundred thousand. So we got back a little bit there.
But in summary, you would, I mean, you have to make a cut because?
Somewhere, I got to make a cut and that would probably hit either our construction program or new equipment. And.
There's no option not to, obviously?
We let staff members go, you know? That's, each staff member is about a ninety thousand dollar a year expense with benefits. But, you know, that hurts service. That hurts quality of roads when we start reducing staff.
Here's my thought. This or the next year's board will have to make, if nothing else changes, will have to guide you in making a cut somewhere. That's the reality. We can't have what we don't have. So if there is a path forward from tonight, I'm not sure simply putting it on to act on taking it away is helpful, but I do think that having some sort of public discussion. You know, I know that you have reached out to our state legislators about the impacts to your department several times, correct?
Yes, and we have one proposal coming through ISAC for the County Engineers Association.
Yeah.
We've been headed off at the pass. We're hoping that we can get the penalty in the loss of the use of the foreign-to-market money knocked out. That, if it's caused by House File seven eighteen and our foreign-to-market funds are frozen, we lose access to almost three million dollars in federal aid funds in our five-year program. That's the County Engineers Association number-one proposal for the legislature next year is to eliminate that if it's caused by House File seven eighteen. Eliminate that penalty.
Okay.
But we're trying to get it addressed. We've been told by legislators that there are issues with a small number of counties that are causing the legislature aggravation on their property tax policy. It's like Jeremy said, we're all on the same diet, whether we're lean and mean like Woodbury County or if we're over the general basic and real basic levies. And while those counties are following the rules and being over, they are an aggravation for certain legislators and a position to bring legislation forward.
So in order to effectuate what Mr. Nelson brought up as far as notifying people on these roads who's making this change, which is the state legislature, instead of just talking about how we're going to cut based on what they're doing now when the budget hasn't been opened yet, what do you think about coming to the board with some options on how to communicate this to the public? Because maybe we need to enlist the public's help and say, these are the areas affected and this is the most likely cut based on the county. and this is the most likely uh, cut based on the county engineer's recommendation. If you disagree, here are the phone numbers for your state legislators. And just put it on the public to help us out because we've held roundtables here, you've sent them letters, you've spoken to them from this seat uh, when they've been here. And I I just feel like if we do anything like we cut or we reduce services proactively, then it's on the board and we have to explain to people why we're picking and choosing certain roads for dust control. But let's just be honest and say, if you don't like this, this is probably gonna happen because we have to make a cut or we're gonna lay people off and we're not gonna do that uh, as a first round. So if you don't like it, contact your state legislator.
Yeah, well, and and I could put an article on the uh, county webpage, too. You know, we have the ability to do news articles. I could uh, show some of those alternatives and put them out there. It seems like we're getting some pretty good hits on the uh, Woodbury County website based on what our our web technicians to send me in the annual or the week monthly report, I should say.
Yeah, uh, but let's work on a communication of some sort.
Okay.
Um, maybe Mark can help with with that and some ideas on how we distribute this at minimal cost. Um, online is it's free to post on the website, but not everyone on these roads is gonna go check our website every day.
I know we, do we still have a Facebook page? So I could send it to Karen, too.
Yeah, same thing.
Get a little lighter.
Not everyone's gonna go there, so.
Well, I appreciate having the discussion and the consideration. Again, uh, this came up as we were looking through last year's expenses and and uh, it's, it's quite the bite out of the budget.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, could you hand this to this MOU to Melissa? Do you get it or should I? Okay. Any final thoughts on this? All right. Item ten from Supervisor Bittenger includes a fraction, approval of funding requests of one hundred fifty thousand dollars from the opioid remediation settlement fund to Agape Community Services for the hiring of an executive director for the purpose of obtaining necessary licenses, grant resources, networking, fundraising, and creating the infrastructure for opening a substance abuse treatment center.
All right, thank you, Chairman. Uh, just as just a open clarification, I am on the board, so I won't be voting on this. I'll be abstaining, so just so that supervisors know that. Yes, back in February, Agape Community Services came forward and just let them know, let them know what they're, let us know what their intent of wanting to um, petition the board for uh, to receive a funding request from the settlement use. If you don't know, I, in the backup, we've included some of the outline, you can see it and uh, of the overview of the program, what it is. Um, and so if you don't know, it's an evidence-based, Christ-centered cognitive behavioral therapy, uh, long-term inpatient and also outpatient substance abuse treatment center. We have, on Monday, August sixth, the Sioux City Council, they approved our, approved selling the thirty-eight acres next to the new Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center uh, to Agape. And so we are, we'll be purchasing that land. Uh, we had a donor come forward that is willing to pay for the entire thing, the five hundred thousand dollars, so that we can start off not being in debt, purchasing the land. Uh, so we are thankful for a donor for stepping forward with that. Uh, and so what we are looking at, we are looking to build a sixteen million dollar building on that, on the property that is next to the law enforcement center. And uh, Karen, if you can, yeah, it'll be on the screen here. We are working with C M C M B A Architects to design the building. And as you can see, uh, these are the renderings of the building and um, that we just got from C M B A Architect. And so Karen, you can go to the next slide. This is the, uh, that's a, that is looking down at the two levels from the east. This is the front side. This is where people will pull up to the building coming in for outpatient uh, treatment, also uh, those that are coming into the front offices uh, to begin the process of finding wholeness and healing from opioid use and substance abuse. And so this is the front top level parking lot. Uh, you can go to the next slide, please, Karen. Thank you. Uh, this is the overall site plan for the building, just just so the board can kind of see overall and for the public to see what we are building. You can see the parking lots that are there in purple. Uh, the yellow there, that is, that's the main building that we will be building. It'll be, there'll be an upper level and a lower level. Uh, it'll be able to hold sixty men. And then if you look to the, to the left, you'll be able to see where it says future addition. Uh, we are building the building in such a way that'll be easier to add on, very easy to add on to the building uh, without have, without having to do major work, groundwork, all that stuff. And so uh, we are purposely building with the future in mind. Our goal is to uh, build on the next wing to have, be able to have sixty women in the program and then sixty teenagers, uh, K, it's not kindergarten, excuse me, sixth grade through twelfth grade. Uh, and so that is what kind of the overview of the entire facility will be like. And then Karen, you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. This is the the upper level and I have, um, if anybody would like to see these, um, I have this printed, so any of the board members or the public that are here today, you can see these. I have these uh, printed. Uh, this is the upper level with our offices, uh, the big auditorium, and then in the green there is the outpatient facilities. And so we would be offering outpatient services to the community and also to anybody, those that are around the surrounding Siouxland communities. And then go to the next slide, please, Karen. Should be one more, I believe. Yep. Yeah, this is the lower level. Uh, this will be where the living quarters are at, the classrooms, um, the the gym, the infirmary, um, the the lunchroom on the faith, cafeteria kind of area and so stuff like that, laundry and all that stuff. So this is the building that we were building. Uh, like I said, it's gonna be a sixteen million dollar facility. Uh, we'll be, we are right now building out looking like staff will be between thirty to thirty-five staff that we'll be hiring. Uh, that'll be uh, helping to run the facility uh, as, uh, once it's open here. And so the request is, um, with the opioid remediation settlement fund, uh, Woodbury County, Woodbury County right now has over a million dollars in that fund. Uh, and we are just requesting a hundred fifty thousand dollars of that to help fund, um, the exec executive director. And uh, out of the uses in the, in the, in the fund settlement uses, uh, we, I've been working with Dennis Butler and Dennis has reviewed this and also spoken uh, through our county attorney's apartment and Agape Community Services, this request uh, is an appropriate use underneath the settlement fund uses. Uh, and Dennis said that he has no question, uh, or no hindrances about this. Um, he believes that this is be a great, uh, a great thing for the county. As we know, many of us all know, Woodbury County has a stream, um, drug use issues and uh, there, there's a, a big need for that and there's not enough treatment centers to keep up, especially long-term therapeutic, uh, inpatient treatment centers. And so uh, Dennis gave, uh, said that he'd be, um, be okay with that and he believes it's fine. Right now, if we were distributing this a hundred fifty thousand dollars to uh, Agape, uh, the Woodbury County's opioid settlement fund would have a roughly balance of eight hundred thousand dollars. I talked with Dennis on Friday and actually the balance is gonna be upwards of eight hundred and fifty to actually eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. So Dennis had said there's some more recently money had had come in to the, to the fund. Uh, so the, the remaining balance, if we were to do this, would be slightly higher, closer to almost nine hundred thousand dollars uh, in the balance there. This request is for a two-year funding of our, of executive director. And uh, to also help with, uh, in the settlement use, it also can help with the infrastructure and building out of facilities and of, for either government or nonprofit entities. And those nonprofit entities also include faith-based entities. Uh, and so this is what this will be going to, to help with our executive director. Now that we have the land purchased, uh, we have, we have the, the building designed. Uh, we are looking forward, going forward, we're raising a capital campaign. Uh, we've had multiple donors, uh, that have, that have, are are ready to donate and pledge and are excited uh, because a lot of our, a lot of people have been affected by um, by the drug abuse, opioid use. Um, I had a close family member that died of a drug overdose and so this is something that I know is important and uh, Agape is, wants to be a positive light in our community and also being kind of just positioned next to the jail. We want to be kind of a reminder and a hope that, you know, jail, uh, going into long-term incarceration is not always the answer, that there is hope. Uh, there is freedom from drug abuse and substance abuse. And so, um, so anyhow, so that's kind of what Agape is doing. Um, and um, this hundred fifty thousand, like I said, would cover also part of some of the expenses with C M B Architects and McClure Engineering. And that's allowed underneath, underneath the use, uh, settlement use fund guide. And so uh, that's what we are coming to present for that tonight. And so, like I said, I won't be voting because I'm on the board, so I'll be abstaining from that, but um, any questions from the supervisors or any?
I'll go ahead and move it.
What's that?
I'll move this.
Okay. Second.
Ms. Raddick, second by Taylor. Ms. Taylor, do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to make a comment if that's okay.
Okay.
So I think it's important that people know and I'm really appreciative. We've been talking about for forty years, the opioid, opioid settlement funds and what to do. And and this is the first request that we're taking action on. And I think it's important people realize there are no tax dollars that are being obligated tonight, nor in the future. It is really about the egregious actions of Big Pharma and Purdue Pharma that resulted in hundreds of thousands of lives.
Yep.
Um, being ruined and addicted and incarcerated. But I really appreciate the sentiment that values every single life, um, being created in God's image with hope for restoration and renewal. So different than the just shoot them or throw away the, you know.
Right.
All hope. So I support this a hundred percent. I'm really appreciative of the people involved with this and in your hearts, so.
Yeah, two, just two things off of that. Yeah, we've, we had one group, if you remember, uh, Sky, Sky Ranch Behavioral Services came earlier, had asked for a request, but then they came back and said they'd found a grant that gave them more money. So, um, so yeah, so this is really our first request. And then um, uh, secondly, uh, I was gonna say with that, you know, uh, this building will be open to, you know, anyone to come to it, you know? And so we have already received requests. Uh, we've had people call, contact us, our Facebook, um, call us, some of the board members and say, hey, are you, you're open, right? Your guy's already open, right? Uh, you know, I've got a son, a daughter, an aunt and uncle that needs us. And we said, you know, sadly, no, uh, you know, we're not open yet. So there is a need. And um, our, our goal is to be able to work, um, you know, with our county attorney's office and to work with other surrounding counties where, um, you know, give people the option, hey, you know, if you go to treatment, you know, you can avoid incarceration, uh, which actually is, you know, as we know, is a public benefit. And so that's the goal of a nonprofit. A nonprofit must prove its use uh, to the local, to the local surrounding community, that it helps reduce the burden of government, reduce government services in the sense of having the government have to step up and do something. So that's part of this, too, is that we wanna make, we wanna help Woodbury County and help Woodbury County government not have to, um, you know, um, take on more responsibility to help solve this crisis uh, with substance abuse and so. Um, so yeah, so that's the request before us. Any other questions or?
Well, I appreciate the faith-based and evidence-based model that this is, uh, those two things together, um, should mean a lot to the public.
Oh, yeah. Can I mention something?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, just so people know, the public knows, we're using the cognitive behavioral therapy that is used in, in the prison systems, uh, the ARDAP system. And so we are, we are, we're using, it's a great system. Um, and uh, we're combining that with that faith-based, Christ-centered, uh, long-term inpatient treatment center. And so, um, and so that's kind of what the system is. It's just not a, just necessarily faith-based. It's also taking the model that's been proven evidence-based and combining those two. So just, just so in case somebody hadn't wondered about that, but sorry, Matthew.
Yeah, this isn't necessarily a role that, you know, government fundamentally should be involved in, but since it's reacting to a crisis caused by another part of our society, it certainly is a, a privilege to make a decision to direct it to a deserving organization locally, uh, knowing that it's going to have some lasting impacts.
Right.
And have a cohesive, uh, so it's a good match for the, for the area.
Right, yeah.
And to complement the, yes?
Oh, yeah. No, I was just saying, I agree with you, yeah.
Yep.
And did I mention, I think I did, but this is a two-year funding, yeah, for two years, because we're gonna go into two-year capital funding, funding campaign, so.
Yep.
So.
Well, it looks like it's going to pass, but does anyone from the organization wish to make any comments? You came here, so.
I mean, or kind of, yeah. So this is, yeah, so Shelley Rossen, we just hired her to be our executive director um, just last month, uh, by faith. We don't have all the funds. That's why we're requesting this. Uh, we have enough funds to be able to begin, but not enough to sustain an executive director, so. Go ahead, Shelley.
Oh, I just really want to say thank you. We are so grateful that you guys have, have said yes, that we can do this for the literal saving of lives, to help improve our community, to place, because we're starting with men, you know, back into the families and to help people be pro-social, which is my favorite word, uh, giving back to the community, serving, being involved and literally hopefully to make Siouxland better together and just be the wraparound service that, um, the community is missing. So we just really are grateful and thankful.
Thank you. Mr. Bittenger, can you clarify the two-year thing for purposes of, is, should that be in the motion?
Oh, no, no, that was just a.
This is just, you're saying this campaign is two years.
Yeah, it's a two-year campaign and this, and this hundred fifty thousand will help fund us through these two years.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, sorry, let me be clear in that. Um, due to, you know, due to the executive director, uh, you'll see it in the back of the, um, the uh, job description for executive director will be fundraising, building a capital campaign, infrastructure. Um, you know, to get the building, literally beginning to work with companies to get the building up, work with donors. And so that is, um, it's a two-year funding from what we've calculated and talked with, uh, others that have built buildings like this, it'd take about two years to raise enough funds to raise a sixteen million dollars. So, so this will help us with that.
Well, may your funding be multiplied and lives healed. Any other comments? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Any abstentions?
Abstaining.
Passes four zero with Mr. Bittenger abstaining due to a conflict of interest. Thank you. Item B is approval, uh, for using one thousand dollars from gaming revenue to support the Sioux City Symphony Orchestra for the construction of a musical education center and sign the resolution of support for the S C S O grant application. Mr. Bittenger.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, we were recently approached, uh, Woodbury County was approached by, uh, the Sioux City Symphony Orchestra about partnering with them financially on a grant. Uh, they are, um, they are applying for a grant, the Community Attractions and Tourism Grant Application to the Iowa Department of Economic Development. Uh, this grant requires local city government and county government, uh, to financially be a partner in that, um, of any amount. Um, and so we were contacted by David Gross, the executive director of the Sioux City, um, uh, Symphony Orchestra. And so I met, went and met with him along with Dan Moore from the city council. Uh, and they are just asking us to help partner with a thousand dollars, uh, so that the grant will go through. If they don't have both partners, the grant can be denied. Uh, and what the goal is, uh, they're gonna be building the Gilcrest Musical Education Center. Uh, it's gonna be on the fifth floor of the Orpheum Theater. And in the backup, there's pictures of the construction budget and, um, and also from C M B Architects, all the new design and the work. Uh, and what this new center will be, it'll be, it'll have music practice rooms, office space, musical instrument storage, and an orchestra sheet music archive room. Uh, and the Sioux City, um, the beneficiaries of this are gonna be Sioux, all Sioux City Community School students and Bishop Healing students will be able to come and take music lessons and practice and work with music professors and professionals, uh, to enhance their musical skills or first-time learners of an instrument and all that. Uh, and so they are just asking for us, um, like I said, to, to partner with a thousand dollars. The financial impact, um, I've included in the backup is our, uh, gaming revenue, which is non-property tax dollars. Uh, and I believe that we could take a thousand dollars out of gaming revenue to fulfill this request of support. Uh, if we do approve this thousand dollars of support, uh, to the Sioux City Symphony Orchestra, uh, the fiscal year twenty-five unallocated balance for gaming revenue will still be at three hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. And that is in the backup for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, the still unallocated, uh, balances, uh, roughly. And so, um, my, my recommendation is to approve the, uh, the motion. I think it's a, it's a great, um, it's a great opportunity for Woodbury County to partner to help students develop musical, um, love of musical instruments. I grew up, I was in band, concert band, jazz band. I still play the drum set. That's what my, I was percussion. Uh, and so I think this is a great, um, a great simple win. Uh, the grant they're applying for is a two hundred thousand dollar grant to finish them out. They've already raised nine hundred and sixty-six thousand and this last two hundred thousand will be that final portion for them to be able to begin construction. And, um, this is a one-time application and a one-time ask from the Sioux City Symphony Orchestra, so.
I'll, I'll go ahead and move it.
Ms. Raddick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nelson, any discussion, Mr. Taylor?
Definitely. I just wanted to say too.
Sorry, Mr. Raddick.
Uh, that anytime we can leverage our funds to gain more funds, I mean, that's the goal and requirement I think we've put forward in the past. And, uh, I think it's a shoo-in for the grant. If they already have nine hundred thousand, they're only asking for two, so.
Yeah, and I would just echo that. I called Dan to let him know I wouldn't be supporting because we have sixty nonprofits and we kind of made that differentiation. But then when I heard that this is a requirement in order to be able to leverage funds, I think that's exactly right, so.
Correct, yep.
You had me after that. Thank you.
Any other comments? All is in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item eleven from Supervisors Nelson and Bittenger for action is approval to direct county staff to review wind energy conversion system. county staff to review wind energy conversion systems ordinance.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm kind of procedural, but this goes back to the town hall that we had back in Lawton that was widely attended. We, I don't think any of us anticipated the discussion.
I did.
You did? Okay. Well, I don't, I didn't foresee it being as long as it was on the topic of wind turbines. There is a, you know, there's a very large group of rural residents that are very passionate about this issue and they were very involved throughout the fair. And last week, they presented us with some new information regarding safety and that sort of things. And, and it's also worth noting that many counties across the state and across the Midwest have updated their ordinances, not only this year, but last year was a very, it's been a very busy the last twelve months as a lot of this new information comes out, people move on that and update what they have. And I think that is, it is always appropriate to do that. And so this is just be to give direction to Dan Priestley and his staff to draft some information based on what we had from that petition that we entered into the record last week during citizen concerns. And I guess if that all entertained any questions.
So in light of hearing the petition from last week, rural residents, hearing some of the new updates of information regarding technology, which I think it's incumbent upon us when we learn new information, you know, people may say, well, why didn't you make this decision back then? Well, we didn't know. And so when, as we learn new information, it seems like there may be some understanding of this is now what safety requires. So just, can you talk to us a little bit about the process in terms of the county staff will study and review potential changes? Or do you anticipate coming back with an agenda item to say, this is what that discussions look like? What, what are the brass tacks if I'm out there following the discussion?
Sure.
When could I anticipate seeing action or?
And I'll let Stan Priestley come up here too, and you can talk to that. But so in the, in the petition last week that, that we entered into the record, you know, residents asked for a minimum of, of certain requirements. Some of those things we don't feel they can substantiate this time. And then there's some things that we feel they definitely can from information that we've had and other information that we've been gathering for the last week, looking at other counties and that sort of thing. And so, you know, we obviously have to post notice before we have any of three public hearings. My ask of Dan last week was that these public hearings be done in front of October because that's when harvest starts. It's a rural, it's a rural resident issue. Rural residents are harvesting in October, you know? So I think in order to maximize attendance for those, that's what I would like to see done. And from the sounds of it, that wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah. And to be clear, this is a standalone home rural ordinance, so it's not out of the zoning ordinance, so it can go directly to the board of supervisors for the three individual public hearings on the respective issues. So in light of the information that has been delivered by the public to the county on these aspects, it'd probably take a period of staff to kind of look at those, see what is reasonable, how might we need to react as far as the information, and then run it through the, the normal process, which is that public hearing procedure.
Can you remind me, when we notify, how, just take us through, is it thirty days prior? How long do we have to post before? I kind of lose track of the timeline.
Yeah, the typical range is a four to twenty day period. They have it capped in Iowa code, so notification would be an attempt to, as far as the legals, to capture the three public hearings, it'd almost be like the Thursday before to kind of point out the next three public hearings ahead of time. It's far different when we're not using the zoning ordinance. Typically, we'd involve the commission, spend some time there to, to collect that information. I would fully intend to brief the commission as far as an information item so that they, they're aware of it, they know what's going on and are able to also transmit information when they're asked those respective questions. But as far as the logistics of the public hearing, we would need to look at some proposals, hopefully have it vetted to the county attorney's office, which is a difficult procedure. And then when we feel comfortable with a, a staff proposal to deliver it through public notice as far as that the public hearings will be held, so the public will be able to contact staff or review the proposal.
But that staff proposal will need to come before this board first? So for example, let's just say August twenty-seventh, the Tuesday, it comes before this board and we say, yeah, by majority, that's what we want. And now we're setting the hearings for the third, the tenth, and the seventeenth. Is that a reason? And I'm not suggesting that that needs to be the timeline. I'm just saying in terms of process, it'd come before this board before it goes to these. Yea, nay?
Yeah, what I'd like to do and what we typically do is I will come back to the board with an agenda item, asking you to schedule the three dates as far as the logistics behind it. We need to get to a point of having something generally in writing, but I think that we can have the scope wide enough, like which is referenced on the agenda tonight, to look at or review the wind ordinance policy so we could, in a sense, plan on a proposal. But it's a good idea to center in so the public knows enough what, which aspects of the wind ordinance are being debated. But we've ran into this before on how you public notice really dictates the, the level of discretion that you all have when you're inside of the three public hearings. And so the debate could be really centered in on specific numbers, if you're looking at setbacks, if you're looking at decommissioning or other specific aspects, or if it's noticed in a way that revisions to the wind ordinance, which is very broad, but it leaves the public a little bit with ambiguity as far as going into the debate. So the clear task is to identify these issue areas. I think that we've seen them as far as what's went on at the fair and other aspects of input that has come in. So staff will have to look at what those concepts are and bring them forward to you as far as what the criteria would be for the ultimate scope of the debate. But I think right now at this point, if we're being directed, it's pretty clear that we're, the scope is we'll have three possible public hearings to air out the citizen concerns from all parties as far as potential ordinance changes. Again, they're proposals in light of possible new information. But at this point in time, receiving the direction, I'll, I'll need to look a bit more at what these issue areas are and come back to the board and ask for the three public hearings in a reasonable manner.
I appreciate that. My last comment would be, I, I hope that we can put something with as much specificity before the public as possible, so it's not open-ended, because I think we'll have a spectrum of those that would like to see one every hundred feet and one that would like to see one a hundred miles away from Woodbury County. You know, I think notifying the public, this is what is being proposed, I think will be helpful.
And it does get confusing if we're saying option A, B, and C through those set of times. So it would be the goal to have a number on, or, you know, specifics, so.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I'll move it.
Second, a motion by Bittenger. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero.
Thanks.
Thank you. Item twelve is reports on committee meetings.
So we met last Tuesday evening. DB and I went to WIT for the Security Institute and had an emergency management commission meeting, rave reviews from rural mayors on the emergency management commission, Mike Montino, given the flooding. And if you look at the pattern, unfortunately, it's become an every five to seven year deal. If you think of twenty twenty-four, Hornet twenty nineteen, Missouri River eight years prior. And so just wanted, this may be a little longer, but just wanted to laud all of the things that they offer, including pumping equipment, communications, when cells, cellular towers and wifi goes down, there's actually an apparatus that they can bring on-site to give connectivity, plans, education. And one of the things that really stood out to me is a lot of times we stock food because we think that's the number one thing. But if you can't access your shelter, all that food in the basement's not really worth anything. So thinking of backup generation power and those sort of things, and then rewriting plans. So for example, if you're out in Correctionville and you have a nursing home where you have people who are on equipment and they need to be taken to a hospital, and every hospital can take two, those are things that you don't think of until you think of them. And so rewriting those plans is important. And then they have applied for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that they believe is very favorable from MURD, for an emergency vehicle. And then the quote of the night or quotation, Scott Mitchell, you could put this on a shirt, emergency management can move mountains, we just need to know which ones to move. So I thought that was pretty good. Trademark, Scott Mitchell.
Last week was our normal Veterans Affairs meetings for myself and supervisor Taylor, but it was just canceled for the month of August, so no report there.
Okay, yes.
And just one, sorry. Veterans Affairs has now been repaired from whoever thought it was a good idea to drive through there. So that is up and running, thanks to Kenny Smith.
Yes, that's true.
I guess I did have something I forget, it's a public meeting, so I, but I forget to update. We had a LEC meeting this afternoon and we kind of had, two weeks ago, we talked about a list of things we needed for substantial completion. And they announced today that there's one item on that list, which is the seismic bracing report. Housman Construction told us today that we would see that report either today or tomorrow. And so if, if they come through on that and we have the report today or tomorrow, substantial completion of the new law enforcement center will commence as soon as we have that report. So that is good news. Finally.
And Mark, can you also just mention along with that, once substantial completion is done, then people can start moving out there and some of these other things. And I didn't mean to bring up, it sounded more onerous, holes in, hundreds of holes in the roof, but it sounds like they're pinprick kind of small things that need to be rectified rather than, it sounds worse than it is.
Yeah, so substantial completion means that we can substantially occupy most of the building for its intended purpose. But then there's final completion, which in the contract, Housman has sixty days to can finish punch lists and also some other items. We have some items that need work, but none of those affect the inside of the building, like for example, the coil, coils inside the air handler. We've got patches on the roof. Basically throughout the construction process, you've got a membrane on the flat part of the roof. As people walk across it, they drop a tool, whatever, they have a puncture and we've had to patch those all the way along. Well, there's enough patches that we've just deemed that we're not going to accept that and that, so under warranty, they're going to, under the contractor, no expense to us, they're going to replace that membrane. But that is something that, that can be done while we're still inside occupying the, the building, moving in. You know, our, our building services staff will still have, you know, things to do inside, whether it's hang TVs, furnishings, all those types of things. And then obviously moving offices out there, moving stuff from the, the current jail out there that they're going to need. So there are a lot of things between now and, and final completion, but this is really that first big step that we had to get this done and that we can start to cross these things off the list as we, as we move closer. So I mean, it's, it's good news. It's been long overdue, but, but we're, we're happy that we're, we're here. So hopefully, like I said, fingers crossed, Housman has said today or tomorrow, we should get that report. And Goldberg Group Architects is standing by to give us that certificate of substantial completion and, and we can get going.
Which they did say, just to claim the meeting, they did say Thursday, I mean, they're hoping by Thursday at the latest.
Yeah, yeah.
To, to sign that and get that substantial completion, so.
Yep.
So, it's good.
There are no other reports on committee meetings. Item thirteen is citizen concerns. Are there any citizen concerns? Seeing none, item fourteen is board concerns. Any board concerns? Ms. Taylor?
I will not be able to attend next week's meeting because of back-to-school night from five to seven, so I'll be thinking of you.
Okay. Any other board concerns?